I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Redmond.
Here.
Councilmember Callings.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns. Mayor Pro Tem Stackfluff.
Here.
Mayor Clure.
Here.
Before we hear from Siskiyou Economic Development Council, I'm going to pass this over to Chief Gibson for an introduction of Sam Hopkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our newest officer, Samuel Hopkins. He comes to us with 10 years of experience between Susanville and Wheat Police Department. He's also a local rancher in the area with deep ties to Siskiyou County, and we're very fortunate to have been able to get him to come to us.
Thank you very much. Welcome. All right, special presentation from Siskiyou Economic Development.
Good evening. Thank you. Tanya Douse with Siskiyou Economic Development Council, and I'm joined by my colleague Heather Dodds. And I just want to say thank you to the council for providing us a few minutes of your time to share with you just a little bit of an update on some of our work and to maybe just remind you a little bit about the things we worked together on. So it's been a longstanding relationship we've had with the city of Mount Shasta, and I know that you know that, but as I reflect over the decades, I said that out loud, we've done some pretty wonderful work together. And I really think our role sometimes is so exemplifies helping you prepare for, plan for, prepare for, and think about development opportunities for the future of our community. And we have had this long time relationship, and we have put many years of work into the Mount Shasta Brownfield site at the landing, and so excited to bring it to a place where it is potentially ready for development, and then to work with you to tap into the financing tools that can help us put infrastructure into place so that we can even facilitate end use eventually. You know, another role that we are really proud of is to be and serve as your Small Business Development Center. And in the last year, we have worked with 50 businesses in Mount Shasta, supporting their small business in a variety of ways, everything from just helping them do general business plans to technical assistance in marketing and finance and the pursuit of capital investment. And we have strived to provide leadership in other places, for example, with the recent investment of CDBG, micro enterprise funding to support businesses impacted by COVID. There were six businesses in Mount Shasta tapping into $111,000 total, business and talent attraction efforts that are so wonderfully vibrantly showcased right now in Theory Coffee and the Summit Lofts. And then I think this you'd be really interested to learn about. We are helping support a climate collaborative for the communities in Siskiyou County, and we have brought together a handful of partners, SORA, the RCD, I'm using a lot of acronyms, I apologize. Stop me, and I will clean up my act.
So far, so good.
So far, so good. Workforce development, you name it, to sit around together to become more familiar with each other's work, but more importantly, to help develop a plan for climate resiliency into the future. And what I think's kind of cool about it, a couple of things I'm really proud about. One is that we are the first and only economic development-led climate collaborative in the state of California. There'll probably be more soon, but... And from that perspective, we bring to the table this really unique lens of how do we support the business community? And I think that's one set us apart in a way that has really drawn attention to our work, and I think that's going to lead to substantial investment in the coming years in support of our businesses. And of course, you know that Heather is standing patiently at my side because she always has the most fun stuff to talk about, so I'm going to let her share with you a quick update about Discover Siskiyou. And then the two of us are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Good evening. I'm Heather Dodds. I am program director for Discover Siskiyou, our tourism program at the EDC. And I'm going to try and keep it short. I picked kind of our top three biggest projects that we're working on right now to share with you all. The first we're really excited about, we have started the Siskiyou County Film Commission. There was one operating in the past, but it had kind of gone quiet. And so a few months ago, we went before the Board of Supervisors and got their blessing to go ahead and apply to become the official regional film partner for the California Film Commission. So this is really cool. This will allow our team to respond to RFPs from production companies. We were actually chatting with the director of the Shasta County Film Commission, and she said she gets a ton of requests for filming in Siskiyou County, and she has no one to pass them along to. So we're really excited. She's on our advisory board for this. We're partnering. She's taking us around to film industry events and introducing us to all these key contacts, and we're just really excited for the economic impacts of this, too. I mean, you know, it'll result in increased hotel nights and TOT for our cities, which is really cool, but also, you know, like our local restaurants and caterers, you know, people that'll provide the services that these crews need when they're here, as well as providing local jobs. A lot of times, they'll hire extras and crew on site in their filming locations, so we're just really, really excited for that project. The second is our local events program is still going strong. We did support the Fourth of July Festival here in Mount Shasta, and it was kind of fun. We have, it's called Placer AI, and it's some data software that we have that tracks people via their cell phones, and so we can geofence events and kind of look at who was there and, you know, what did they do when they were in town? And so we decided to look at the economic impact of our local events for the last calendar year, and we used a formula that was pretty conservative. We got numbers from Visit California. We estimated an out-of-town visitor would likely spend about $125 a day at an event, you know, food and souvenirs and things, and a local might spend $20. So those are the numbers we used. And when we ran the numbers for the Fourth of July Festival, you guys had 30,600 visitors at that event with an estimated economic impact of $2.5 million. And in the whole calendar year, like all the events, we did, you know, all the major events in Siskiyou, that was $6.5 million. So a third of that just came from that one event, and so we were so impressed with that. 58% of the visitors were from out of town, which is fantastic. So we really look forward to being able to support that event in years to come. And then finally, I wanted to talk about our new internal booking engine. So if you guys have been to our website, the user experience in the past has been, you know, people will find where they want to stay, click on a link, and then they're taken to that lodging properties website to book, or they can call, which is fine, but it's not also the easiest for users. And so we, for years, have wanted to use an integrated booking engine on our site so people can book directly from Discover Siskiyou, and we are finally in a position to be able to do that. So it actually launched last week. So now, this is a completely zero commission or zero fee for our lodging partners. People can book directly from our site, and we can package together things like mountain guides, tours, fishing trips, something that people in the past have had to book separately from their lodging unless the lodging property, you know, happens to offer a package. And so now, we, on our end, can actually build and offer these packages, which we think is really great, might entice people to stay extra days, spend extra money in town. We can do the same with event tickets, too. We can even do like local restaurant gift cards at a reduced rate, things like that. So we're really excited about that. It will also provide us with a dashboard to look at all kinds of data from the people who book rooms here, and we are happy to share that with you all once we start getting reports on that. Aside from that, we've been rocking and rolling on our advertising. We just wrapped up a billboard campaign in Sacramento that had like 50 million views, I want to say. I'll double check, but that was really successful, and we also have ads running for the next six months in the Sacramento Airport, which are really fun. They're digital ads. When people walk past them, they get retargeted ads on their phone that they can click on and visit our site, so it's pretty fancy, pretty cool. We're excited about it. Yeah, those are kind of our main projects.
Yeah, so I'd just also like to mention that as we bring this year to a conclusion, we are going to be turning our heads to some strategic planning. And I know we meet with Todd quite often and learn about the priorities of the city, but maybe you can have that sort of top of mind as well and be sure to feel free to communicate that to us in whatever way makes sense to you. And we'll be as responsive as we can and incorporate it into our strategic plan for the coming years. So I just have to, I look at you guys, and I'm like, this is, I've been here with you for so many years, and it's just been a pleasure. And all of these things that we get to come and share with you, so many of them started right here at this council. Mount Shasta's been such a superstar in leadership for us for the years, and oftentimes, through the strength you have in your city staff and your willingness to provide that leadership have inspired Discover Siskiyou, you know, our efforts on so many ways. So do you have any questions for us?
Any questions?
There might be some coming in, but I just wanted to share that I am so proud of our partnership throughout my time on council and long before. Discover Siskiyou has done so many amazing things for our community, so many things that a lot of us don't know about. And I'm going to plug myself here for, if there's a seat on that advisory committee for the film, let me know. And also, Tanya failed to mention that the Economic Development Council, and Tanya specifically, was incredibly instrumental into getting this EIFD off the ground, so you don't give yourselves enough praise for what you do for our community. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And we're looking forward to helping you implement an EIFD. More acronyms.
Any other questions, comments?
Just want to say thank you. Especially regarding the EF, EIFD. Thank you for that effort.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we are moving on to public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on something not on the agenda, please come on up. Oh, I am, no, no, no. We're good. Sorry. Go ahead, please. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Anyone online? All right, we will close public comment, move on to council and staff comments. Todd?
Should we announce closed session results? Okay, so we had held a closed session. It was about the, a potential condemnation claim for the well site located on one Shasta's property and potential condemnation of the well. Negotiations have, you know, are kind of stalled right now, and this is a last resort. We don't want to end up going down this hole, but it's something that we need to be able to pursue as part of finalizing our negotiations. So with that said, a couple of things. I bet you didn't know that we had a noise study going on. We had a grant that a previous planner decided to stop work on and didn't tell anybody. And so I've got that back up and running, and we'll have a draft of that noise study next week, which we can use in our general plan. I don't want to say too much, the enhanced infrastructure finance district conversation with the county, you know, this always happens when you start getting down into the nitty-gritty details. There's always a little bit of friction, so we're trying to work through a couple of issues with the county and hope we're going to be back on track for another meeting sometime in December. And a couple of things that we'll be bringing back, but just to kind of give you, you know, a teaser, we've talked about McLeod Ave, and Seth Petrie was working on redesign of that roadway along with what we wanted to do for parking. And so we've had him pick up the parking issue again, and we'll have at the next council meeting something on that. There's 40 feet of right-of-way, and so what the plan is now is to, you know, it'll be vetted by the public and council, is to provide bike lanes on either side of the street and parallel parking on one side of the street. And that'll solve our issue with being able to move our emergency vehicles through there, and it will solve some of the parking problems, and it will cut down on the number of crashes because we've been able to straighten out the geometry and better the sightlines. One of the issues that was brought up is can we compensate potential members of council, current members of council, to attract candidates? Did some research, SB 329 passed on July 6th of this year, which puts a limit on how much you can compensate your council members based on the size of the city. If you're under 35,000, the max that you can compensate your city councilor's mayor at is $950 with up to an annual increase of 5%.
Per year, per month?
No, that's per month. Yep. And so I'll bring that back as a staff report, and we can chew on that.
So that's mayor. What's the council?
That's for both.
Okay, so it's $900 approximately?
It's what?
$900.
$950.
Per month.
Per month. That's the top. And that's all I've got for now. I want to turn it over to Muriel. You know, we, you know, we talked this morning, and Muriel, if you could go over the actuals, the accruals, the grant disposition, our reserve as it stands right now, and an update on the deficit as much as you can. I know you've got, you're still behind on some of this stuff.
Yes, Mayor and Council. At this point, I am in reconciling August, New August, and as far as fund balance, we had a loss of about $470,000, which is right around where we had anticipated it to be. As far as, what was the other thing, Todd?
Accruals?
Accruals. The accruals are all done for June 30th, and I'm just waiting for the auditor to get here to do this, to start field work. Today, I just finished the state comptroller's report for the street report, which is due December 1st. There's a lot of things due December 1st, but that's just, that's just one of them. As far as sales tax, we received the third quarter or the third month of the first quarter of the fiscal year, so for July, August, September through September, and it's at about 7.5% higher than it was last year. Okay? We got that today. So that's hot off the presses. And I'm able to answer any questions I hope that you may have.
Anything for property or TOT through September?
Well, property tax, as you know, when you get your property tax statements, they're due in, I believe it's November, so we don't get property tax until December. So we may have received a few thousand dollars in just what I would call county cleanup, where somebody has collected on delinquent property tax, so a few thousand dollars here or there, it would be it. Then we would get the property tax in December for those November payments. As far as TOT, that was reported to you on the last financial report that I did. I can't remember off the top of my head what that was. And what else? Tessa?
That was it. And then my second question was, are the budget figures equal to prior year or a little less? For instance, when you say that sales tax is 7.5% higher, would we assume that that's 7.5% over budget also?
Over prior year.
No, I know, but does that also equate to the budget?
Somewhat.
Okay.
Your revenue projections are pretty conservative, so we're probably doing a little better than you predicted.
Correct, yeah. Thank you.
So according to my math and memory, we started somewhere 2023, so July 1st, 2022. We settled in after audit and so forth between 2.6 and 2.7 million dollar reserve after, okay. So we have approximately a $5 million loss, a $500,000 loss. $5 million. Okay, so $500,000. So is it safe to say that our reserve balance is about $2.1 million?
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Starting the fiscal year.
Chief, any update? Okay. Council?
So I'll just chime in about the Collier Interpretive and Information Center instead of at the end, since it says none for outside meetings. So we had our meeting at Casa Ramas in Mount Shasta, Fourth Tuesday of October, and things are moving on quite well for that agency. The marketing materials just about finished. I failed to bring the material tonight, but I'll bring it next time. It's a little trifold. Their little souvenirs are just about finished. And they did, they did talk to me about a possible donation from Mount Shasta City. I don't know that, they weren't sure if Mount Shasta had ever given money to them in the past. Have? Okay. Wyrica, they made it clear, is donating $7,000 a year. So I'm going to put a future agenda item on for $1,000 donation in the second half of this fiscal year, $1,000. See if we get an up or down vote on that.
That's mine.
Well, when you do it later, you'll probably won't need a second vote by the end of the meeting. All right, any other council updates? Okay, we will move on to committee updates. Anything to report, Todd?
Nope, the DAC was held before the last meeting, and, yep, hasn't been anything else since.
I noticed a painted utility box. Looks pretty cool.
Yes.
Good to see.
It's moving. This is a good group. It's a great group, actually.
Yeah, awesome. All right, number seven, consent agenda. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added heretofore shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes, November 23rd, 2023, regular meeting. B, second reading and adoption of CCO-23-11, amendment to the Mount Shasta Municipal Code, Chapter 7.20, Parks and Recreation Areas. C, resolution CCR-23-31, certification of the November 7th, 2023 special election.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through C by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes 5-0. And agenda item number eight, council selection of mayor and mayor pro tem. Kathy Joyce?
Thank you. In November, December of each year, the council selects a member to serve as mayor and a member to serve as mayor pro tem for the following year. From the city council protocols and the municipal code, the mayor and mayor pro tem are selected by a majority vote of the members of the city council. The selection is done by open nomination by any member and voted upon by a voice vote. As a general rule, the council encourages the rotation of the mayor and mayor pro tem positions. However, there is no prohibition against the same person serving as mayor in two or more successive years. For tonight's process, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of mayor. Once all nominations have been made, a vote will be taken to close the floor. I will then take a roll call vote for each council member nominated in the order the nominations were received. Once one council member has received a majority of votes, he or she will be deemed as selected as the mayor, and there will be no further votes. Once the mayor is seated, the meeting will be turned over to him or her to preside over the vote for mayor pro tem and the remainder of the meeting.
I'm happy to answer any questions. No questions? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll go ahead and open for public comment. And we don't have any hands raised online, so no public comment, and I will go ahead and open the floor for nominations for the position of mayor.
I nominate John Stackfluff.
Do we have any further nominations? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the floor? And do I have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? None are opposed, so we'll go ahead and take the roll call vote for John Stackfluff for the position of mayor. Councilmember Redmond?
Aye.
Councilmember Stackfluff?
Aye.
Councilmember Clure?
Aye.
Councilmember Callings?
Aye.
Councilmember Sterns?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Stackfluff. I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. All right, so before I move on to
So as we're moving along here, the only other agenda item tonight is the future agenda items. I'd like to go through those. And at the end, those who would like to add any items, especially for the next year, can do so, as long as we have some support for them. Give me a second here. All right, so as we go through these, I'm going to, basically some of these items have to stay on the list and others, maybe there, there's a lack of support now. So let's, let's find out what the council feels regarding these items. The MOU between the city and the Friends of the Library, that has to happen, so that's keeper. B, setting term limits for council members, besides myself. Is anyone interested in that at this point? All right, so that stays. Attracting city council member candidates, this is regarding increasing compensation. Assuming that you're interested in that, still Tessa, so that'll stay. McLeod Avenue parking prohibition, that was just discussed by city manager, that definitely has to stay on there. Active transportation committee, Tim, that's something I think you introduced. Are you still interested in that staying there?
I'll leave it to other council members and staff.
Well, I'm interested in trying to resurrect that committee. Tessa, you are too? Okay, so we'll keep that on there. Survey of Washington Avenue, I think that's a keeper for sure. Adoption of the housing element, that's a required agenda item for, for the future. Wildlife prevention messaging. Todd, can you remind us of what that's about, the messaging part?
Yeah.
More signage or something?
The gentleman who spoke at the last meeting was talking about ways to get out the message of, you know, beware of your surroundings and talking about putting up signs on specific trails. I've been talking to Chief Burns about what we can do. You know, the problem is, I mean, I guess it can't hurt, but anybody that's out and responsible don't, doesn't need those signs. The people that are more likely to, you know, start fires and be completely unaware of their surroundings, they're just, I don't think they're going to look at them. But, you know, we're looking into signage. I don't know how much it's going to help.
All right, so you recommend we keep that there?
Yeah.
All right. Now we get into the interesting, very interesting ones, as far as I'm concerned. Stormwater drainage proposition 218 process. I'm certainly interested in keeping that going. Anyone? Okay, good. The somewhat controversial snow plowing operations slash creation of a district. Anyone want to take, does anyone besides myself want to keep that on there? Okay, lots of people, good. Sidewalk snow removal in the downtown district. I don't, I don't really remember. That doesn't happen now? I thought, it does.
It does.
It is good to keep it on. It is, we pay a woefully small amount of money and we need to readjust.
Readjust, all right, so that definitely should stay. For over 90 days, this one's been on here for over a year, I think, extraction and exportation of groundwater from the city. How do you feel about that now, just city manager?
It's, for me, it's on the back burner, given how much I've got going on. I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
But I don't, you know, we have, it's not like people.
Part of the, the issue is that we're actually, we don't have any interest in any bottling, from any bottling companies, so it's back burner. Okay, but we'll leave it there.
We've been talking about it for two years now.
What, the ordinance?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, all right, well, we'll, we'll leave it there for now. If, yeah. And the camping
ordinance, that has to stay there, too. That's regarding homeless, I assume?
Yeah, and that's where we're looking for, you know, the inventory of, of that sites that we need to keep clear.
Okay, so no changes to the future agenda items. I'm going to add the $1,000 up or down vote for a $1,000 donation to the Collier Information and Interpretive Center.
I agree.
Thank you.
To the floor?
Yeah.
I was also thinking that with the changing of the guards and another year passing, that we should consider having another workshop with our council to make sure our, everything's aligned.
All right, so do you think we should do that, is it best to do that in January or December? I was thinking January or Wednesday in January?
Sure.
Okay. So when we come back to our next meeting in December, let's decide what Wednesday in January is best to have a meeting to review, like we did in prior two years, I think we had this meeting. Council goals, a lot of them are being worked on right now. Some of them kind of coming to a conclusion, like the wastewater treatment plan and so forth. And then introduce new items of import to any of you. And if there's anything that needs to be dropped, we can cover that, too. So bring your notes from the prior meetings, especially Tim and, and Jeffrey had good, good ideas on, on paper. And we'll try and review everything. And I'll get together with city manager prior to the meeting so that it goes expeditiously versus, so I'm thinking a 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock stint, like in the past, on a Wednesday, if we could. Any other, so that's an agenda item to be decided on in, in December. So any additions you'd like to put on?
Okay.
All right, without opposition, I will conclude this meeting. We are adjourned at approximately 6:08.